All right, good afternoon. It is 5:00 PM Wednesday, November 12th. City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that our press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Actually, tonight is a combination workshop, City Council meeting, just due to Election Day and Veterans Day and runoff Election Day and Thanksgiving. So we have a combo meeting tonight. So join in standing for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for the beauty of it. Thank you for the change of seasons and temperatures that we get to enjoy here, and thank you for watching over us and keeping us safe, and just pray that you'll guide conversations and discussions and decisions we'll make on behalf of our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicole, you want to do a roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Carroll, here. Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Gosian?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Streetman?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Mayor Pounds?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. First item is citizens' comments.
Glenn Davidson?
Right here. Thank you. Front and center, Glenn.
There.
Yep.
At the end of the microphone.
Thank you for allowing us to come tonight. Thank you for having us here. I'm not accustomed to public speaking. I'm just an accountant, so this...
(laughing)
I'm sorry for if I stutter or meander. I live on Goat... I've lived there for three years. When we bought, it was a lush green area behind our home. That was the berm. The last folks that got in there, we have a neighbor on the other side of us that's a professional landmover, and he does this for a living, and he saw the result of what was done, and he said it wasn't done properly. It's not graded properly. It's not graded to go down to the drain area. It's pity and full of huge ponds that are breeding mosquitoes. So the quality of life is impacted because, I mean, we have to spare ourselves and our dogs to take the dogs out to go to the bathroom and bring them back in. It's not bad. So there... that compounded or combined with the fact that the last time that there was product from the marina that was dumped there, the spoils were put into such a state that it could accommodate that volume of product that would come in from the marina. There was a breach, you probably all know about, and then there was a resulting litigation from the breach. I'm concerned because I back up against the berm, as do my neighbors. We all... there's significantly more houses now than there was in 2001 when it was originally done, or the last time the marina had done it. And I'm just concerned that there might be another breach and that another property will suffer damage from this. The result would be, or the best consequence to me would be to have the product into the next island to the south, which is actually currently built to accommodate the volume of product that would need to be dumped into it, and it seems like it's just another 100 feet or so of piping that could be put into an island that doesn't have homes on it, doesn't have families living next to it. And really, that's just my two cents. I thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Adam Bernholtz?
Hi. So I'm Adam Bernholtz. I live at 2725 Buccaneer Road on Goat Island with my crew over here. I've been out there about 23 years. So I'm here on behalf of myself, obviously, but over 50 people at least on Goat Island to voice our concern and strong opposition to Goat Island being used for pumping sludge from the marina dredging. This material, well known to be toxic for marina gas stations, simply should not be pumped into a pond behind my house directly above my groundwater. Behind my house is an abandoned Corps of Engineers dredge site that was purchased by some IOP property owners to place dredge from their canal. Since then, they have not taken care of the land at all. Mosquitoes have become otherworldly. Apparently, they call themselves Canal Association of Goat Island, but in fact have nothing to do with Goat Island besides owning a sludge pond and wanting to make money by pumping others' people's sludge into it. They don't care about our health. 20 years ago, IOP Marina used it, and it was a nightmare. Soil and water samples taken after show toxic levels of materials from gas discharge facilities. Sledge seeped out from underneath the walls of the pond. There was litigation and insurance settlements. There are ongoing property line disputes with the property as well. You all are elected leaders who have accepted a duty to protect the public's health. Although not residents of IOP, we hope you can still respect our health and dignity. Politely, we don't want your toxic sludge, and I guarantee that none of you would want this in your own literal backyard. We are a gentle group and don't bother others. That's why we live on an island. We come to ask you to quickly move on from Goat Island as a choice for the spoil and analyze the two excellent options, which are dedicated spoil areas under the IOP connector with no wells or homes immediately adjacent. We have not yet gone to the newspapers or responded to TV requests at this point, nor have we formally retained counsel, although I have been informed that there could be very clear liability for the Isle of Palms in contracting to pump known toxic sludge literally adjacent to people's homes. The toxicity data and potential liability are clear, at least to a reasonable reader of the information. Instead, we come calmly and politely today, but do request your thoughts and response to this issue in the record today, please. Our future actions depend on your response here today. I'd be happy to take any of you out for a boat ride and tour of your proposed toxic sludge pond site. Please be a good neighbor. Thank you for your understanding and compassion with this matter.
That's all.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Next is presentations. First will be the fiscal 25-year audit. Russell Deal from Verus is here with us. Russell, thanks for joining us.
Can I control the slides with this?
I think so.
Hey, my name is Russell Deal. I'm a partner at Verus. We are the CPA firm who is engaged to provide an opinion on the financial statements for the city of Isle of Palms. Appreciate you all having me. So here, we're just kind of giving a high-level summary of the audit, and then I'll talk a little bit about the MDNA. What you all have, I believe, in your hands are really just a draft financial. The financials are not actually finalized until we get a rep... a signed rep letter back from the city. But no difficulties encountered during the audit. The information was provided in a timely manner by the Isle of Palms staff. Great communication from Deborah and her team, and there were no material journal entries that were necessary. We had no internal control findings and no compliance findings. Anyone need clarification on what a material journal entry or internal control finding or compliance finding would be?
No, but do you have... you mentioned something about we had the financials, but we... I didn't get a copy of any of this, so this is all I'm seeing in terms of the audit.
Yeah, I don't have any financials whatsoever.
We have a draft copy of the audit that we can send. I thought it was included. But we can make sure you get that.
Yeah, I would like to see that. And in terms of the material adjustments, is a listing of the adjustments in the audit?
It would not be in the audit, but it would be in a letter that is provided to counsel.
Okay, so that'd be provided to us as well? Yeah, great.
Didn't you say that the final audit report will be released when the management rep letter is returned?
Correct.
Right, so we don't have the rep letter. That's why.
I wouldn't anticipate you all signing it until you at least...
Right, yeah, I'm sure. I mean, people are questioning why it's not here, but it's like, it's just part of the procedure in an audit.
Yes, sir.
Well, I've signed lots of audits, but I've never been asked to sign one I haven't seen, so that's why I'd like to at least see the audit.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to sign it here.
Yeah, I know, but we're tacitly approving the audit, and that's why I'd like to... I'd like to see it.
Agreed. So the first three pages of the statements that you don't have, that's the audit opinion. That's really what we're engaged to do, is to provide an opinion on the financial statements for the city. They are for the year ended June 30, 2025. And kind of to summarize the opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects as an unmodified opinion, also considered to be a clean opinion. These financials that you'll get shortly are just draft financials, and the only item needed to finalize them is the approval. So there is also a single audit, which is related to some federal funds that you all receive, and there were no findings associated with that single audit. To summarize, most of this is pulled from the MDNA, the Management's Discussion and Analysis, which would be kind of the first section after the opinion. But assets exceeded liabilities by about $71 million, of which $61 million and $8 million related to the governmental fund, and then the proprietary fund or the business-type fund, which is the marina respectively. For the year ended June 30, 2025, the revenues exceeded the expenses by $11 million, and the ending governmental fund balances $48 million with an increase of 5.7 over the year ended June 30, 2024. And there's $4 million of the total fund balance that is available for spending at the city's discretion. Some capital asset additions throughout the year, $4.4 million on the governmental, and then about $881,000 on the business type, and that's stormwater, entitled drainage projects, vehicles and equipment, dog park, and some other projects. So total debt held by the city as of June 30, 2025 increased by about $1.3 million.
Decreased.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Decreased by 1.3 million, and you got an AA1 Moody's Bond rating, which is high-quality, subject to low risk. That's all that I have.
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
Russell, in here, you say that the revenues exceed expenses by $11 million, and if I look at the last July 31 preliminary financial statements, it looked like revenues of all funds exceeded expenses by about $5.3 million. Is there a bridge that gets from the $5.3 to the $11?
There is. What I'm talking about, when I say the $11 million, is the governmental financial statements. I believe what you're looking at is the fund financial statements, and there is a reconciliation between the two.
Between the two? Okay.
Yes, sir.
And as well as on the total fund balances?
Correct. On both the... they're not called balance sheets, but on the balance sheet, there's a reconciliation between the two, as well as on the...
So if we get the copy of that, it's...
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I'll just wait and look at that then.
And is your audit letter included in that draft?
It is. It's also... it's a draft audit letter as well, so... yes, sir.
Other questions? Russell, thank you. I know you all are here in force, so thank you for your efforts. Next item is an action... after-action review of 2025 beach parking season with PCI. Quinto is here with us tonight. Quinto, thanks for showing up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'm Quinto Iquesma with PCI, and we'll review parking here. Just kind of giving an overview of our payment preference. Obviously, we use not only kiosks but also mobile pay. So kind of tracking that, going back to 2023, we were seeing 54% with the mobile payment, and what we've seen is just a steady increase over the last couple of seasons with 90% mobile payment preference this year by our customers. We had 13 kiosks last year as far as the Flowbird equipment. We reduced that down due to malfunctions and other issues with some of the components, and so we came into the season this year with six kiosks. We had one of those machines that continued to stay inoperable throughout the year. We are still working to troubleshoot that, but we'll have a recommendation here at the end of this presentation for phasing out that kiosk. That one's actually on Ocean Boulevard. We still have a presence of a kiosk on Lot A, Lot B, and then we have about three to four scattered on Ocean Boulevard. Cash payments continue to decline. They were under 3%. And again, that... I think right now where we sit with kiosks, we have six kiosks, one of them inoperable, and four of them that accept cash. Parking payment revenue comparison, what we've done here is basically we've highlighted your 2025 transactions, total transactions for each month, and then highlighted the revenue that corresponds with those transactions, and then done... and then you have a comparison there to look at 2024 total transactions as well as the revenue. And what you kind of see is, as you get started there, you see, month like March, we were down in transactions, and overall, we were down this year, although you'll have a couple of months scattered through there where we did have higher transaction counts.
So you said we're down. It looks like we're up for the year. Am I wrong?
Total trans...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, total transactions.
Oh, transactions.
Yeah.
The revenue's up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Revenue's up, yeah, of course. Yes, sir. And we'll talk... we'll highlight some of those things about the revenue and the reason of... obviously, there was some... a new IOP rate that was introduced this year, and so those things helped to impact the revenue in a positive way, but we did notice that there's transactions were down. I did put asterisks by the revenue for October as we are still finalizing that, so that's a very conservative number. I think the number we're actually seeing is probably about five more grand on October revenue, so for a total of about $155, but that'll be finalized here in about the next week. Any questions about the transaction counts or the revenue?
Any idea why the transactions were down? I mean, is it...
Couple of different reasons. I mean, a lot of it's speculative.
Weather can matter and stuff like that.
Yeah, some of it's speculative. There's a... you know, there's a... you had, you know, some of the state of the economy on some regards. I know even if you look at March, I believe going back to last year, I think we had not only St. Patty's Day, but also Easter hit in March, and this year, Easter didn't hit in March, I believe. I think it was April. Is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, otherwise, no, there was... we kind of saw that. I know we wanted to look at the DOT traffic cam, and we're still kind of looking and reviewing to see what the total traffic that came onto the island was, but we are seeing that across some of these beach communities that traffic was down. But we'll have to get... look at that DOT cam to kind of finalize and see that.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
You know, one of the reasons that we do this, that we've increased the fines, is to try and get people to comply with the law. So do you see that happening? Is that a reason transactions are down? Are people complying?
You'll see... we'll see this. Well, we saw in some months there was higher or comparable compliance. We're actually going to highlight that in a couple of slides, and we can kind of talk through that, and you'll see where, when you look at each month, the compliance rate was pretty comparable even as transactions were down. So we do think compliance is up, but we noticed there was more compliance in the right of way, and we'll kind of... we'll kind of highlight some of that data here coming up.
Thank you.
I'm going backwards. Sorry. Just to kind of highlight some of the overview of the revenue, in March, we came into March this year with the same rates as last year, and then in April's when we implemented the council-approved rate. So kind of just taking you back, that's one of the reasons we're receiving with the revenue why it's down in March in comparison to last year, whereas as you get into some of the other months, you have lower transactions compared to last year but higher revenue, and that was once the rate was implemented. In June, as you folks remember, we came in and we had a discussion about the after 4:00 PM rate, and we made those changes based on your approval to change it to $3 an hour. So just kind of give you overall, transactions down 3%, revenue up 13%. Kind of highlight the marina parking. Last year, we started the marina parking in July, so you kind of see our revenue numbers there in... from July through October, and then this year, we had the full season. So we're up overall this year as a result of having that full season. Only anomaly we saw there is in October, we were down this year, and again, some of that might be because of that. I believe we had like a little storm, tropical storm that may have came through early in that month, so that could have impacted revenue a little bit at that layer... at that area. Any questions on the marina? Just kind of addressing the compliance portion of it. Again, what we've done here is just kind of highlighted the breakdown of the payments between mobile payments and kiosk payments, and then what you see here is the non-payment citations that were issued in each month. When you compare that to 2024, you do see we are up 6% with compliance this year. Part of that, and we'll kind of highlight on one of the upcoming slides, but we think because when we started last year, we may be shock value, and a lot... you'll see that we had a higher citation count with nonpayment. I think it was roughly 1,400 nonpayment citations last March, whereas this March, obviously, that's way more down, and we think that's related to the compliance in the payment zone. I think the only other one that stood out was if you go to October, you see we're actually down a couple of percentage points in compliance compared to last year, and I don't really have anything to determine why that happened per se outside of maybe just, you know, the type of visitors that may have been coming to the island at the... during that month may have been different than the traffic that typically comes during the summer that is more compliant. I know we did see a drop-off in transactions in that October month, and again, the revenue with the new pricing changes helped to keep that revenue up, but the transaction count was significantly down. Again, this is given a comparison of the nonpayment citations from 2025 to 2024, and you could see the delta there where there was a big deficit in terms of citations in March. Kind of start working through the other months, and you see most of them are comparable. You start to see, as we get to the end of the season, August through October, we increased our citation counts from last year in the payment zone. Any questions here? This gives you more of a holistic view of the enforcement program and kind of gives you your violation description, starting with your nonpayment category, which is... was our highest. What you kind of see out there to the right is giving the total count of citations in 2025, and then also the total count of citations in 2024. What we've... if you kind of see, we highlighted some of the top four violations, and what you see is nonpayment. There was an increase in nonpayment citations written this year. Against the flow was actually... we had a higher percentage of citations there in comparison to last year, and then you're... or I'm saying percentage-wise, I'm sorry about that. Percentage-wise, the percentage was higher, although the total count was down. And then as you look at the residential permit, we do feel like there was a sign project that we did at the end of the season last year that we think helped bring more... about more compliance in the residential area, and so that was something that we were able to see a little bit more easily, was that sign project did help to contribute to more compliance in our residential parking areas.
Actually, a quick question. Is the noncompliance volume similar to what you see in other municipalities, or is there some...
This is... that's a great question. This is probably one of the more higher compliance areas that we've seen, and I know when our ownership came out here last season, it's for... what's it called? First Saturday, where we do even free parking, they noticed that very quickly as we were observing. A lot of people were very intuitive to either go to a kiosk or to go to one of those signs, and so we saw very early that this seems to be a more compliant parking area than what we're seeing across some of our other operations, whether it's like a Hilton Head or even a Folly Beach.
What's the determination of whether it's a warning or a valid citation?
So a couple of things there. Particularly with this location, what we've been directed to do is, first couple of weeks of the season, we issue warnings. That was kind of just a directive given to us from the city. So what you see is every March, we will start out the gate with just doing a warnings. And then the only other time that the warnings are now issued, particularly as it relates to nonpayment, is if there was something in question there. Maybe the person might have paid, and now they expired a minute over their time as it gets into... let me give you another better example with... parked within four feet of the pavement, that would be one where maybe they're at three and a half or something close there that was enough where... or maybe the line wasn't clear because it now faded because of a rain out that weekend. So there's some discretionary things in there and where, hey, if there's a... if it's a... if it's close, then they will issue that warning, but for the most part, we try to keep it black and white. Just kind of reviewing the enforcement program. We did see some temporary delays as a result of one of the changes with the ordinance was making sure our teams were sworn in and going through a little training. We did see little delays in that. Last year, we would have been able to maybe deploy someone on a weekend, whereas now with the swearing-in process, we need to make sure we get that done Monday through Friday, and then we would kind of release them into a training program. The other thing we tried to do this year is do a better job of maintaining balance in the right of way. There's always... always people funneling through the payment zone, but making sure that we're in the right of way, whether it's in the residential areas or out on Palm, that ends up being beneficial to not only reduce the amount of calls that we get from residents who are having violators in their... in their residential areas, and/or for folks who start... you know how it is, sometimes people will... if you see someone parking two foot from the pavement, everybody will continue to do that. So if we have a presence out there, we feel like it helps to mitigate those type of things from happening as well. This is just kind of giving you a heat map to show you, you know, January through March, April through July, and August through October, just the coverage of where we try to... where we're trying to make sure we cover the entire island. Obviously, as it gets late in the season, less traffic parking on some of the extremities there, and so... but we try to make it sure we're doing a good job of covering the ground. This is kind of giving a review of our call center. We did see overall... I don't have that total number to compare, but we were down in calls this year in comparison to last year. Nature of our calls are typically about citation questions or general questions about parking information. What we did highlight on this at the bottom there, as you kind of see, is our resident-directed enforcement, which are the calls that are coming directly from the residents. We didn't start tracking that through our call center until May, so that's why you don't see any data prior to that. But that was something we implemented, and we'll continue that going. But these are basically calls that are coming into us or to our call center, and where a resident wants us to come in their residential area to respond to a violator. So that was one thing that we felt like was... we did better this year in terms of not only being able to track that, but if the residents need a follow-up call, then we would give them a call and let them know that, hey, this has been addressed. Okay? Any questions with the call center report? So just kind of reviewing with the beach parking improvements. As you folks are aware, we did have the weekly and seasonal permit. We ended up only selling, I believe, eight to 10 of those seasonal permits. Part of that was the timing of that release, so what we think we can do is do a better job in marketing these products next year. We talked earlier about reducing the kiosks from six to five. That one kiosk, we're going to continue to try to troubleshoot that, but we do think it's on its last shelf life, and I know the initial intent when we came into the program was for us to get down to five, so we still feel like we have good coverage on Ocean Boulevard and in the lots with the kiosks.
Quinto, on the weekly and seasonal permits, does that include the employees?
No, sir, that does not include...
This is only the off... the off-islanders that could take advantage of the seasonal permit?
Correct, yes, sir.
And we only had a handful of those that were taken advantage of.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and we do think that that was a timing based on when it was rolled out, and then also we could probably do a better job of marketing that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. One of the recommendations we'll be submitting is going from a two-year resident per... or going from an annual resident permit renewal to a two-year resident permit renewal. Part of the thought process with that is, right now, the hurricane reentry sticker is... does every two years, so kind of aligning it with that, as well as reducing some of the burden on the residents with doing the annual renewal on this... on this program. And then the PATH app will show... I like this. This is a... this is an app that we're using currently in Folly Beach. We'll highlight it in the next slide here, but it essentially provides wayfinding, payment, and customer info. Kind of white-label this which you guys... but just to give you... I know these lots aren't the lots that you guys use here, but using this example, what this kind of shows is not only allows you to know how much lot capacity is, but it also lets you know how many vehicles or how much percent of that is taken. So as you see in this example here, this only has nine spaces on that lot. It'll highlight one has been taken and give you that percentage. The other cool thing's not kind of featured right here, but if they'll... if that... those cars right there, they're green when there's high availability, yellow when there's moderate availability, red when you're getting close to that lot being full. So again, given the customer just that intuitive description to let them know there's either availability or not, or they may be planning your trip to be later or earlier in the day. Some of the other features that we're able to feature a part of this app are not only the advertisements as you see on the bottom, which we think would be great for the business and the retails here, but additionally, you're able to use like the helpful links and be able to... whether we want to put parking rules, parking rates, or any specific IOP information that we feel would help the customer, we would be able to... that we feel would help the customer, we would be able to land that all in our app and be able to then promote that to the customer.
Do you tie that to your kiosks to see who's paid for what lot, to come up with the numbers?
Well, so we'll be able to tie it to the kiosk per se, but what we could do is, there's a geo-fence around it, but if a customer is within a block or so of a paid parking area, it will allow them to initiate payment through our mobile solution.
Okay, great.
Quinto, could we get the county park to feed in here somehow?
So Doug mentioned this in a couple times, our meeting, what, right now, what we're, what we have planned to do is we have occupancy cameras at Lot B and Lot A. So right now, that's what we could use to leverage and be able to pull that information. I know Doug, we've talked about the Ocean Boulevard, and also maybe right around the curve on 21st Street and being able to have some type of visual there that highlights what's going on. But we could definitely, if we need to look at and explore what infrastructure would be needed at County Park to be able to achieve that, but yes, we do think there's opportunity to be able to do that. Any other questions? All right, I'm finished up, guys. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Quinto.
Real quick, just, and this is just from my perspective. Y'all have a terrible job, in my opinion. Your employees are, that I've dealt with, are just spectacular, and I just want to say thank you.
I appreciate you guys. Thank you for your support and why I have your time. I did, I know Melissa Anderson, a lot of you got to know her very well. She's helped get an operation started here, and she was here for the last couple of seasons. She's moving on to some entrepreneurial things, but we do have our new GM, Nate Garrison. You guys will see him around. But we do appreciate the support, and again, we'll continue to try to push forward and make it better. Thank you.
Thanks, Quinto.
Douglas, anything you want to add to?
We do have discussion of those recommendations later in the agenda. You want to, probably wouldn't be too long before we got to them, or you could reorder either way to talk about?
Yeah, I don't think it'll take us long to get there. Quinto, are you okay to hang for just a minute?
A few minutes, Quinto.
Next item is approval of previous meeting's minutes at City Council meeting October 28, 2025. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any changes, edits? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Douglas, you want to take us through the dashboard and the short-term rental?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to suspend the rules of order and address item nine, Capitol Projects B, Marina, Marina dredging. I believe there's nothing much to report, but we have a lot of people here waiting for some word on that. So I'd like to make that motion to suspend the rules of order.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Douglas, you want to get that?
Yes, so my only report here would be that our, the city has engaged ATM. Philip Slagel is our point of contact for that project. He has been working through the Army Corps of Engineers and the Canal, I think it's called the Canal Association, on the piece of property that has been identified here tonight by the Goat Island residents. We are aware that the Army Corps of Engineers would require a significant amount of work to make that site eligible to receive material. We, Philip and the Canal Association have been discussing the work that needs to be done and if there's a willingness to do it. So they, they are working through that association to see if that is even a viable location. The permit that the city has identifies a number of alternative locations. We have been presented with an expected cost. There's obviously a cost differential on each one of them, depending on distance primarily. So we have, we have that information. I do think this one was the most cost-effective, but it also had the questions about whether or not it would, it would ever be to a point that it would, would be acceptable to the Army Corps to accept material. So kind of in the, in the path of steps that would need to happen, first, the Canal Association would have to agree to make the, the improvements, and the Army Corps would have to sign off on the improvements if they were to happen.
Douglas, who's responsible? There was a statement about the toxicity of the, of the material, which is clearly a concern that may not have been really addressed wholeheartedly 20, 30 years ago, but who's, who's going to do the testing or who's going to clarify that that is or is not toxic material being dumped anywhere?
So there was additional testing required by the environmental agencies through ATM that ATM handled for the city to satisfy the permitting agencies. I don't have, I don't have, you know, with me tonight, great detail about what those reports indicated and how that compares to what happened. But, but there were additional tests done on the material. Eventually, the, the environmental agencies were satisfied that it was suitable. You know, if, if there's a question about what their level of suitability is, that that would be really for our.
Is that information available? Or can it be made available?
That report could, yes, absolutely.
Is this, is this something where it sounds like there's not that much of a cost difference? And then there's the, there's two other sites that are viable, better, more viable, farther away from people? Is this the type of thing where we could just decide to go look at the other two sites?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I don't know the cost differential again, sitting here tonight. I don't know if it's, it may be significant. I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
And are the other two sites where? Do you know off the top of your?
Yes, they're, they're kind of all in the area. I think, you know, generally kind of around Goat Island. There aren't any that are too terribly far away because the material is coming from the marina. It's not going, you know, way, way down, too far away. But we have all that, we definitely have all that information we can provide back. We can discuss the options.
Douglas, what's, sorry. What's our timing for, I know it's dependent upon the spoil site, but what's the best guess on timing of this project?
So it is in our, it is in our, it is in our budget to do this winter. We do know that there's going to be a decision point here in the near future because we had always planned to allow other adjacent property owners who also want to dredge to join this effort and, and take advantage of the cost savings of a dredge being on site. However, those other permits are lagging behind. There's been holdups with, with no other agency, no other entity that wants to dredge in combination with us is ready. And we need to get, we need to get an update as to how far they are, how far off they are from a timing standpoint to make that decision if we are okay, or if we want to delay and allow those other owners to continue to do it in conjunction with us, or if we want to go, go at it our own quicker. But it was planned to be this winter.
Because they're doing their own permitting.
They're doing their own permitting. Yeah, we have agreed that they could coordinate with our construction.
Wouldn't our, wouldn't our dredger have a schedule that they probably need to abide by? Otherwise, they're going to get knocked out of their own schedule or not.
We do not have a contractor, we don't, we don't have a dredge under contract to do this work. It's, it's, not that it's easier, but it's, it's not like the ocean-going dredges that we.
It's a smaller.
Yeah, it's a much smaller operation. We don't have the, the kind of cost savings by timing the dredge that you all are accustomed to hearing about in the ocean-going scenario.
Rusty. Thank you. Does any of this put our funding source in jeopardy?
That's a good question. We have a, we do have a million dollars in the state budget. I don't think there's a time, we need to verify that, but I do not think there is a time constraint, like the theme of grants, we have to spend them by a certain date.
It would, it would seem to me that with the delays that we typically have dealing with anything with the USACE and some of these other agencies, that this budgeted allocation could become jeopardized as a result.
Well, we can, we can certainly check in on that. I don't think that there's a problem. They, and I think the, the money is actually with us. We're holding it. We do periodically update on the status. If we were to not do the project, obviously, we'd have to return it. But I, right here, I'm unaware of a deadline.
Right. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying any of that to say we need to expedite this whole deal. We need to do the right thing in regards to Goat Island and the spoil process and where it's located, but it just seems to me that there's always someone or some agencies that just drag their feet on this if we don't get behind it.
Yeah.
Douglas, can you, I'm just confused. So explain to me the process that's going on to, again, to evaluate the spoil sites and?
So the, so the spoil, the spoil site itself had a breach in its wall, in its embankment. So material escaped out of that, out of the walls. If you had vision, just kind of a bowl created by earth, unearthed berman and a bowl, it was breached, material got out. The Army Corps of Engineers has said, and they have authorized us to use that site, but they've told us before you use it, you have to have this breach repaired. So our engineer is dealing with those property owners to gauge whether or not they are going to make those repairs to satisfy the Army Corps of Engineers. Once that is done, if that's done, we would then be okay to use that site as a dredge site. So there's a, there's a process to getting it kind of finalized, approved, but it is in our permit and within what we've been permitted to do to use it as long as those repairs are done, if you will choose.
And if not, then one of the alternative sites are going to be evaluated and permitted?
Those are also in the permit as a, as a viable alternative site. The issue with them is there is an additional cost. Again, I don't know what that incremental cost is sitting here tonight, but we, there's a cost differential for each site.
And the expected timeline to get the first decision is what?
Well, there, there, we should have that like in the next 30 days, a decision on the repairs to the day.
Is it being repaired now?
Not that I'm aware of. Has not, prior to our last meeting, which was two weeks ago with ATM, had not been repaired at that time. He was engaged with the ownership about the repairs. They, I do think they've indicated a desire and a willingness to make those repairs.
Who's, who's they?
It's a group of owners called the Canal Association.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
More to come.
So more to come on that. And I can, I'll certainly provide information on where they are with the repairs, what the other cost considerations would be to pivot, and then the timeline, you know, on the, on the million-dollar state allocation.
And the spoil sample analysis.
Oh, and the soil sample, yeah.
Douglas, do you have a contact person, a resident Goat Island, that you could, that you could communicate with, what, what the findings are going forward?
I could, I have a public comment that was made. I have, I do have their, yeah, I do have their, I can send that to them.
Questions, comments?
Excuse me, thanks.
Thank you, Douglas.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Douglas, you want to finish your note if you need to?
Yep.
Then we can go back to the dashboard.
Mr. Mayor, Council, we sure appreciate you here in this.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, October dashboard.
Yep.
We, and, and remember, this is the October, this is the status of affairs at the end of October. It is showing one firefighter and three paramedics vacant.
How many are today?
And I think, Chief, do we have, we have an additional one firefighter?
Yes.
So there, and still the three, the three paramedics. So there is an additional one from the dashboard.
So two firefighters, three paramedics currently, yeah.
And you've got two or three in queue, right? Either, either at Academy or?
But, yeah, we do have two at the Academy, but they're not, those two are not going to remove two here.
Yeah.
So they're included? The two?
They're not, they are not, those positions are not considered vacant.
Okay, got it.
We have interviewed two firefighters and one paramedic. Go.
Do, just repeat that. Repeat that for?
We have two interviews for firefighters and paramedics scheduled for this week.
Two each?
One, two firefighters, one paramedic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Two firefighters, one paramedic.
Two firefighters, one paramedic.
All right.
Police is two down. The rest of the, the rest of the staff is, is fully staffed.
Can I ask a question about that while we're on?
Sure.
Mayor? Yeah. The police, I think we said last time that the police had interviewed two people. Have they, are they hired as well? Are they still vacant? Or close to being hired?
Sorry, I can answer that. We've given two conditional offers. One started today, full-time, he is on, on staff. We gave a conditional offer for another one. We have, over the last week, lost one other position. We do have people going through the process for that as well, though. So we're really down to just one, assuming that the conditional offer, the points are met.
Okay, thank you.
Other, other points that we've, we've talked about in months prior, we have 1,700, we've issued 1,700 short-term rental licenses this license year. That is only, that would only be six months, we're about halfway through that license year. That, that to compare to last year, you would really have to add 119 based on the, on the hotels getting one hotel license instead of 119 individual licenses.
Douglas, did you find out what the revenue impact? We were talking about that at the last meeting.
So Deborah did do that analysis, and it, it is significant, I think in the neighborhood of $70,000, $70,000.
From a business license?
That's correct. So that is, that is $75,000 less in short-term rental, rental license revenue that we received.
And how, how does that work? Like, just from a practical matter of filling out the application and the things that are asked for on the application when you have 119 taxable units?
So what, what they did is they put it all in one ownership group.
But they're still paying, but they're still paying property taxes separately, right? I mean?
I don't, I do not think they are. I think they're all paying as one conglomerate. They're paying all their fees. It, it is.
So like, is Charleston County looking at them as one unit?
I, I believe so.
I mean, looking at them like a hotel, essentially.
Yeah, so I think it is more now like a hotel owned by 119 people with one, and that was, I mean, that was their, that was their goal in doing what they did. And it was actually originally built, permitted, and licensed that way as a hotel, kind of ran that way for, I don't know, five to 10 years. They then, the owner, sold it, sold the units individually. It then created the situation where there are multiple short-term rental licenses, and they, they then successfully went back to one hotel business license.
How does that compare with the situation with the villages in Wild Dunes?
So the, so the villages, well, they, they also have a hotel that they operate, that's one license. They then have.
Who's, I mean?
Wild Dunes, the Boardwalk Inn is one license.
That's not the villages, though.
Yeah, so, so that you then have the condominium units, which are, each of those has one short-term rental license. Each of those that has a lockout unit has an additional short-term rental license. So there are, you know, you could look at it multiple ways, but there are actually single units that have two short-term rental licenses because you can theoretically, and they do, rent them separately. It's like a hotel room that's co-joining to a, to a condo, and that would have two rental licenses.
Okay, but many of them, I don't know if all of them are managed by the Wild Dunes.
Right.
One of the hotels, I don't know what they call it. So it's just.
Management doesn't, it doesn't matter, but it's each unit in that situation has its own short-term rental license and sometimes two.
And its own ownership information, I guess you call it.
Right. Each owner is, is issued an individual rental license.
Sort of the difference between a co-op and a condo sort of thing, with the other one, with the front beach unit, hotel that's now, I mean, it was short-term rental licenses for each individual unit, and now it's not because they've gone to a.
Correct.
Co-op. Thank you.
I don't know if co-op is the right term, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Short-term rental dashboard, I feel like we've kind of talked about the numbers on short-term rentals, nothing else to...
So, is it comparable to this time last year? I guess if you...
So, so I think the number is about eighty higher, if I'm doing eighty higher. This year, if you make the adj, if you take seventeen hundred, which is where we currently are, you add one hundred and nineteen, that gets you to eighteen, nineteen. Last year at the same time, well, last year actually, at the end of the year, we were seventeen eighty-four. So, if you were to do an adjustment for the one hundred and nineteen, we're, we're about...
For the end of the year, where we were last year, I think, I did some math. It looks like we're up forty-two versus this time last year, but...
We're forty-two.
Over? Over, yeah, higher.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, you know, and it starts to get very much in the weeds, but we, we have talked about the fact that it is trending higher, slightly higher than years prior. And Jeannie Garrett, the city's short-term rental coordinator, has indicated that the short-term rental identifying software was not finding all of the hotel, basically the condo rooms that all used the same stock photo. So, there's, like in the villages, it would show as one listing, but you could rent it seven different times or ten different times. So, that, that was a discovery Jeannie made through the, through the software identified. And, and I think that was maybe thirty or forty additional units. Yeah, so it's probably about the same.
So, mostly it's, it's just accounting, the way what you were calling it, it's, it's not a significant increase?
Right. Yeah, I, I would say it's...
It's just the way that things were laid out.
Generally flat. The number, the numbers, you have to kind of dig into the numbers to understand them, but I think they're generally flat.
Okay, the number that I'm most interested in is primary residents. That's pretty much stay, stable?
Yeah, thirty-four percent, yeah.
Yes.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six percent?
Thirty-six for the last two years.
Okay, so it's, it's the second homes that are being used as short-term rentals now?
If there's any, if there's any shift, that, well, it...
Okay, thank you.
We do, we do have the new data from the county. Based, that's the file. We are combing through that data to make sure that our numbers are correct. So, next month, we'll see new numbers from the county.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, that, just to kind of refresh your minds on the process, we are updating our short-term rental data every month for you, but once a year, we get the debt, we get the dump of the county's data, which gives you the four versus six percent and all of the types of units. So, that's that, on that short-term rental report, that's really that left, the left half of that page will be, we have the information, and we'll be updating that for the next report.
All right, Douglas, we have departmental reports. Any questions or comments since we have department heads here? Deborah, do you mind grabbing a mic while you're doing financials, please?
Yes, sir, and I'll be as brief as possible. Overall, the city has collected twenty-two percent more in revenue compared to last year at the same time, which is, we're collecting about twenty-one percent of the revenue for the year. Overall expenses, we are tracking kind of the same way we were tracking last year. This time, actually, it's, it's about one percent less than where we were last year. The general fund at twelve percent of the annual budget is very similar to prior year. While local option sales tax and parking revenue are performing better than prior year, business license and building permits are a little bit slower, and that's just a decrease or a lag in the development-related revenues. The general fund spending is at twenty-nine percent of the annual budget. This is a little bit below our targeted amount of thirty-three percent for the second quarter. So, we're in line with where we should be for the, next page, Jeannie? For our cash and investments, there is about eight point six million dollars better than where we were last year in 2024. That's about eighteen point seven percent increase in the city's cash position year over year. Of that fifty-four point four million dollars, fifty-one percent of that is in, fifty-one percent of that is in restricted cash earmarked for tourism, beach preservation, and drainage projects. My notes are written there, just kind of highlighting some things. So, if you have any, any questions, let me know. But I just want to point out, which this is not written, for our LGIP investments, we gained one hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in interest for the month of October, and so we are at seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for the year. For the fund balance, the project kind of worksheets and capital, this kind of, as the next sheet, please. This just kind of tells us where our fund balances are currently versus what the city budgeted for this year. And then that bottom portion is just what we anticipate in future years. So, as we have discussed before, the beach preservation fund of that negative six million dollars is just there to show if that project does take place, then that's where the beach preservation fund will, it will land. However, we know that we can't have negative fund balance. So, as the budget shows in 2027, funds from other areas will be allocated to the beach preservation fund so that fund will not be negative. But as it stands today, if these things take place, that's where we will land, just for clarification. For our tourism funds, we collected two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That leaves us flat over last year this time for the state accommodations tax. We did, that overall, we collected like one point five, but this fund only gets, this is only the tourism side of that, and that's one million dollars. So, that's four percent higher than we were last year. We still have not collected anything for Charleston County pass-through. Hopefully, that'll be coming in this month. And the hospitality, that is still lagging a little bit behind. We're one percent behind where we were same time last year. The beach preservation fund is the same, two thirty-eight, and that's, again, flat over where we were last year. And the local option sales tax, we collected one hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that puts us at seven percent higher than we were same time last year. Project worksheets are attached. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Do I have one?
Jan.
I don't know whether you can answer this now, but maybe you can get back to me with it. Is what percentage of our expenditures are from grants that we receive? Let's say for this past year, or, yeah, yeah.
I will get back to you on that because I don't know the answer.
Good, thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Questions, Deborah? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Deborah.
Next item, procurement. No items there. Douglas, you want to finish up the capital projects update, please?
Starting with the Waterway Boulevard path, Phase One is a hundred percent complete. Phase One A is the work that happened on four or five private property owners. That work is complete except for the final landscaping to be put into the newly-built berm. So, kudos to Truluck for getting that project done within time and on schedule. I think we all kind of felt like there could be a possibility that, where there would need to be a workaround because of the, you know, paving or, or something, and we were all somewhat expecting that, but there was no need for that to happen. The golf course is up and operational and excited to have that, those first two phases behind us. We are still in a, we're in a bit of a race to get Phase Two permitted and underway. That's the, that's the phase that has a FEMA grant tied to it. So, we're still, we're still working towards having that project substantially underway by February.
Can you give us the limits of that project? Remind us.
The geographical area?
Phase Two goes from where to where?
Yes, it goes from Twenty-first Avenue to Forty-first Avenue.
Yes, the entire path.
Yeah, it's the, it is the portion of this project that's happening in the Waterway Boulevard right-of-way. So, that's, that's the entire widening of the path, and it's also, parts of that path will be elevated to provide the new seven feet of protection.
Okay, thank you.
We have the Phase Four drainage plan, which is improvements on Palm Boulevard between Thirty-eighth and Forty-first. That is also anticipated to happen this, this upcoming winter. There was a part of that project that was being designed and worked to, to work with the Water and Sewer Commission, Sewer Basin Project. Their project has stalled, so we're, we have redesigned a bit to take advantage of additional space available. But we're well under permitting, and that, that project is also scheduled to happen in the winter of 2026.
Question, can we back up just for a minute?
Sure.
What's, what's estimation of time of completion on the Waterway Boulevard path?
So, the, so...
Now, we've got a lot of variables right now, but what do you think?
So, the, the first, first phase is done. Second phase is planned to happen this winter, prior to the, prior to the springtime to be completed. There is still a third phase that, that happens exclusively on private property. There's a part of it that happens behind the fire station, parts of it that, that happen back behind people's homes on Waterway. That is all scheduled to happen a year from now.
Okay.
So, the barrier that you will see will all, is all planned to be finished at the end of this winter. There will be some holes to plug in the barrier that really the, the public wouldn't be aware of or wouldn't see that are slated for next winter.
Great, thank you. There's a lot of interest in that project, yeah.
The Marina, the green space at the Marina, the Public Facilities Committee had a good conversation about that this morning. The, the hanging item there is the, the restaurant tenants have agreed in concept to lease amendments to make those changes to the leased areas, to make those changes in their lease. But they have asked for assurances that they will not have to bear the financial burden of making those physical improvements. So, the, the Public Safety Committee is talking through, I'm sorry, Public Facilities Committee is talking through options to consider and the, and the various costs of each option, kind of talking about gravel versus asphalt versus other, other items. So, those conversations are underway. They have set a meeting for December second to, to pick up those conversations. And if they can, if they can come to a conclusion of a recommendation, that'll be coming to council shortly after that for consideration. There are additions...
But with none of that to be, none of the cost to be borne by the restaurant?
That's correct.
So, why are they part of the conversation now?
They, they will not agree to amending their lease without the assurances that they will not have to pay. So, that's a, that is a future decision for council. Are you all willing to pay the bills to make the physical improvements that are necessary to bring that concept to life?
All right, so it continues in committee.
Next project, Marina dredging, we, I think we've covered that pretty well. Well, more to come on that as we get more information. Beach maintenance and restoration, the work approved by the last, I believe it was the last time you all met, you authorized several hundred additional emergency bags. Those bags were in place prior to the, to the high tides that we had earlier this month. Lucky, luckily for us and those properties in those areas, the winds cooperated nicely during the king tide, so there was fairly minimal damage, and, and again, those bags were in place, so that was good. We do have later on the agenda discussions about next steps on, on beach management, so we'll save that conversation. Still have underground power lines and DOT Palm Boulevard bike lanes and pedestrian and parking enhancement on the, on the agenda. Those are, those are still on our, on our sheets but not making a lot of progress. I will say that the COG has been the, the Berkeley Charleston Dorchester Council of Governments has been putting in a lot of work on the walkability, mobility study. So, we will have, you know, a, a good kind of master plan of needed and wanted bike lanes, golf cart lanes, walkability improvements. So, that's, that's forthcoming.
Question?
Douglas, I have a question, too. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, there's a lot, talk about, as there has been for twenty years, undergrounding these power lines throughout the island. If you take a big view of it, to do the entire island, and we're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd like your input, you're talking about many, many years and millions and millions of dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we, one project is, is a million to a couple of million dollars.
And one, one, one project being how long, like a couple of blocks?
Well, the, the most recent project we've kind of drilled down on is the Forty-first Avenue from the Marina to, to just beyond the sewer treatment facility, so half of, maybe half of Forty-first. And that was, that was well over a million, approaching two million dollars to do that one kind of half.
That would be total cost?
Total cost.
Total, and our portion of that would be what?
And our portion of that's fifty percent.
And it's the timing, and it's getting all the other, that was what the issue with Forty-first was that there was lots of other holdups, right? I mean, this is...
Much less Dominion.
This isn't like, we could just, even if we wanted to, just say, hey, we're going to spend the money and do it. We're on Dominion's timeframe. We had, I know on Forty-first, at least, we had ten other issues that came up that...
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, each of those fairly small projects is its own saga. And the, the Dominion Fund is not enormous. I mean, the Dominion Fund may grow by half a million dollars a year, and that's a matching fund. So, it's not that if we wanted to do thirty million dollars worth of work, Dominion is not sitting there with fifteen million dollars to, to cover their half of that. So...
There may be some places we can't underground. It's just like, it's just like any construction.
Mr. Mayor, I asked, I asked for, to address a question and deferred to Jimmy. Can I please ask, ask my question before someone else jumps in? Despite undergrounding power lines, we haven't had a meeting with Dominion since February the eleventh. It's nine months. So, we really, from the Public Facilities Committee meeting that they had February the eleventh, there's been no follow-up on that undergrounding master plan. Is, is that committee not intending to address that anytime soon?
I, I mean, I think the, the staff would have to say that, that if there were additional projects put on the drawing board today, that would be very challenging.
So, the committee needs to recommend that there are additional projects we need to consider?
Just don't know that the staff has the bandwidth to do many more projects between now and the end of...
But we don't know anything because we really haven't had a follow-up meeting with Dominion on any of this.
Yeah, we're not, we are not actively meeting with Dominion.
I would suggest we take this off of the capital list as a reporting into the committee deems it appropriate. I would suggest we take this off of the capital list as a reporting into the committee deems it appropriate to open up conversations with them again.
Katie, I thought we were doing a.
It was my understanding Dominion was supposed to be coming back to us with a plan for the areas that were most problematic where we had had.
And what we're using, what's the, can you remember what their acronym is for their funds that we have? But although part of it was we were, we were looking to do a master plan to prioritize what was next.
Yes, that was, but, but I, you know, I, I don't think that we're on the top of Dominion's priority list. But I'm sure we could reach back out to them and ask them to, to get us that information that we had requested.
Yeah, that, that would be a, I mean, we would need to formalize that request and make that, that they're not, that request is not underway with them.
To do a.
To do a master.
Prioritization, yeah.
Yeah, but they did confirm if, if the city were wanting to spend some of those funds to do a master plan, that would be an appropriate use of.
That is something they would entertain.
Yeah, but, but.
So we would have to actually fund that?
No, we have not kind of initiated that project.
That originate with the committee.
Well, but, okay, let me, you said, we wouldn't have to, we would have to fund half of it, right? I mean, they're saying we can use as NSF fund or whatever those things are.
Non-standard service fee fund.
So they would, that would be a split half and half, just like a project, right?
That's correct.
But, you know, again, the two projects we've done are just minor projects on 21st and 14th. Boy, and getting Dominion's energy level behind that is nigh impossible.
Good choice of words.
Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to say, shouldn't we at least have a, a request for a project in Dominion's queue, just in case? You know, that maybe we would get to the top. I don't know whether this is the time or place for doing a master plan, but it's usually the way a lot of those projects work is you've got something in the queue and something else falls through.
I think we do have, I know we decided not to go with 41st because it had all those other problems. But there were, yeah, there were a couple others that were in the.
Yeah, we have an identify, identified list, you know, it, it got, there was a lot of emotion around the palm tree cuttings. There was the idea of a master plan. I mean, it would just, it would need to be, whatever the next direction is, we would need to identify it, agree to fund it, put the, put the, start the process with Dominion and, and we could certainly, we can facilitate that.
Yeah, and I think to Scott's point, I mean, you're one of, one of the identified places was behind City Hall here. There are just going to be some areas we're not going to be able to, I mean, you look at the Grand Oaks that are behind on Oak Harbor. I mean, that's going to be a tough one to, to pull off, but I know it was one of the five or six projects that we initially identified, so.
One final point, but by initial, by initial point, yeah, it is time to move on. We're talking about many, many years.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, many, many years.
Many millions.
Right, but it's not going to happen in one four-year term for any council member or mayor.
No, a few poles come down with each project.
Right.
Maybe one or two with each project. Each project is, is a year long. So it's a very, very much a long-term project, long-term goal.
And it also is the cost benefit analysis of it from Dominion's perspective, which also kind of from our perspective with staff's time and, and paying money to investigate it and everything else is that, yes, there's not as many outages when they're buried. But when they're buried and there is an outage, it's a hugely more difficult process. And so, I, I mean, it just, it didn't feel to me like it was something that's, you know, all that pressing of an issue, considering the other things that we're dealing with.
Katie, I can speak to that personally. We've had issues over the last few years and have had a settlement with Dominion just due to the other underground issues and issues it caused inside the house, so.
Well, in the meanwhile, we haven't discussed anything with them for the last nine months. So I would just, I would just again recommend that the committee take it up again.
All right, Douglas, let's move on.
That's the end of my report. We're going to strike the 21st Avenue sidewalk repair as that project is, is complete.
Can we remove their sign?
In the right way?
I wasn't sure if there was like a requirement that it stayed there for a certain amount of time.
There was a requirement until they're done, but I, as far as I know, they're.
I was actually looking at, I was noticing that there today.
New business discussion and consideration of 2026 beach season parking recommendations. I know we just heard this. Thank you, Amy. Douglas, what do you want, anything to add to that?
Yes, yes, Amy has the, the recommendations we've kind of developed working with the PCI team. Just wanted to, previous recommendations, I think, went back to the Public Safety Committee for next steps. But wanted to, I guess, get your initial take on this and see if there's anything that you don't like, do like. Or do we just want to, want to take it to committee or?
Well, it seems like one of them's on there as a fair, as it's time sensitive in the two-year resident parking going January 1st. So that's something we should, I think, decide whether we want to do here or not. Otherwise, we'd miss the timeline if that is something we want to pursue.
I don't really see a downside to that.
Yeah, and I think Quinto and I talked about that. I don't think PCI, I think PCI felt like that, that is a source of kind of agitation to the residents to have to do that every.
It is.
Yeah. So I think they felt like it would be a.
I mean, Sean, are you, I mean, is there anything that causes, needs to go back to committee?
I don't think there's, I don't think there's anything on there that's major, I think, you know, that we need to have to go back to committee and come here. I'm fine with just, I make a motion that we approve all four of the beach parking improvement recommendations from my OP.
Second. Further, Jan.
I'll second that and then I have a comment.
Already got a second.
Okay, my comment is, have we settled on weekly and seasonal permit costs yet?
We're just talking about these four recommendations.
Yes, Jan, to answer your question, we have, we have settled on their costs and they're not, they just weren't utilized. So we, we wanted to get the word out more because I think there was only.
He said eight.
Eight or so? Yeah, so very low uses. So we just want to increase awareness of their availability. And it was done a little bit after the season had started, so we're going to have a full, full year of it, a full season of it. So that, that is really just a recommendation to increase the marketing of those.
Okay, but before, we had a weekly permit, I believe, but not a monthly. I'm sorry, I missed that part of the meeting.
No, well, can I copy? Yeah. Quinto, if you don't mind, talk to the microphone.
Just to be clear, last season, we had a seasonal permit for 60 that was open to anyone. This year, coming into this season, what we, we, we cut out the seasonal initially unless you were a business person and the business folks could get that for 60 employees, that is. And then we also had the weekly at 100. Once we had that mid-season meeting, we added that seasonal pass for the general public, which was at 2:25.
Okay, thank you. Got a motion, Katie, sorry, do you have something? Anybody else? Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Quinto, thank you and team for your efforts, yep. Next item, discussion of next steps for beach management and preservation. You've got a document in your packet, Douglas and Sean.
Yeah, but so I would just describe the, the goal here, I guess, is we have, we have been talking about ways really of making our, our upcoming project more durable. So, you know, we, we've talked about how we've struggled with the fact that we put, put all the sand out here and it leaves. Used to leave in kind of 10 years. Now I think we think that it is leaving after eight years. And we have heard as a city, a number of alternatives that would make our project more durable. But what we would need to do to, to, to forward any of those recommendations is to identify the kind of risks and benefits of each, the cost of each, the pros, the cons, the, the expecta, the expected outcome of each. And, and it's what the coastal scientists term an alternatives analysis. So what we are proposing is that we would go out and request qualifications to have coastal engineers present their firms to us, their prior experience to us, and we would choose a firm to do this analysis, report back to city council on, on each of the, each of the different alternatives we've identified and give us some metrics in terms of how much would they cost? Will they get permitted? Will they survive legal challenges? Are there any downdrift concerns with those projects? So really kind of taking a, a concept and doing additional study to get it to a point that the council can make a choice, hopefully from that menu of alternatives of, you know, which, which direction you want to go. Already, we have heard the ideas of shore perpendicular groynes. Those are kind of walls that would trap the sand. We've heard the idea of shore parallel breakwaters that would kill the energy of the waves and, and make the shoreline more durable. We have heard about geo tubes. We, we know that there have been owners interested in geo tubes. FOTH Olson has talked about an idea that they, that we've kind of coined a sand trap where we're going out and actively removing the sand that, that's building up off of the shoreline before it comes on shore. So we would ask them to go back, study all of these concepts and report back to us with, with really which of these is feasible, which is cost effective and give council, hopefully, the information that you all need to say, yes, this is the, this is the option that we want to pursue. And then that would obviously kick off designing and permitting and implementation of whatever alternatives you all support.
Go ahead, Douglas, sorry.
And we discussed this at the committee. I think, first of all, these are longer term. This, this doesn't impact if we can pull in the current beach renourishment. There's no way we're going to be able to implement any of these probably realistically for the, or hold up the current renourishment project. But I think what we were also talking about is that this, I think for the engineering firms is not a, I think we, we talked about, is not a huge effort. They do this all the time and it's a, it's a fairly straightforward, they've got the experience, they've been doing the beach renourishment and implementing these strategies up and down the coastline that they're working with, maybe with the exception of the sand trap. So I look at this as more of an information gathering. I think they can do this quickly. I don't think it's that expensive. Do we want to, you know, have this go to FOTH and Coastal Science and get a couple of different views of this? It's a very, it's kind of a nominal effort. You know, we don't want 10 people necessarily doing it, but to go through the entire bid process and everything for, I mean, this is going to be a, I think you told me Douglas, is a pretty nominal effort.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
I just think two opinions on all, these are big items, you know, one might say we, we can do it this way, another one say, you know, it's, it's going to take you a lot less to do this.
Yeah, we have, because we are, have been most, we clearly talk to CSE almost daily. We're not on a daily basis with FOTH Olson at this point, but we, we've been talking with them a lot. They have both verified that, and they've, they've both reviewed the document. They, they do have a few minor tweaks that they would suggest, but they've both verified that they felt like this was the prudent next step for their kind of ideas. To Scott's point, I think it is not, you know, not an insignificant task for them, but I think it, it could be a quick, fairly quick turnaround. We have, we actually created this request for qualifications almost directly from the request for qualifications we did for the second opinion. A lot of the information is the same, so we have similar responses that we, that we got for that second opinion work. And, and also I do think it's a, it's not, don't expect it to be a large financial commitment, but we would, if you all were to identify the firms you wanted, if you felt like you could identify the firms you wanted to deal with or the firm you wanted to deal with, we could do that. You know, I think the last time we spoke, we talked about doing, doing some type of competitive process. Anytime we, we did this type of work, the reason we laid it out the way we have. Procurement code would not require that, that we did this process if you didn't want to.
But you've got a pretty quick turnaround to your point of December 5th.
Yeah, we intentionally made it a quick turnaround. We verified that, at least with the two that we're talking with regularly, that they can meet that turnaround.
Okay.
I mean, is there another, go ahead, Jan.
I'd just like to say, I know there was a lot of questions in our, in our last meetings on beach renourishment about recognizing the recommendations of the, the ad hoc committee. And one of them was to consider alternative firms. The second thing is, our request for qualifications is not a bid proposal. So we're just asking for your, when you hire an expert, which you're hiring is qualifications and then you negotiate what the contract is. So I think that's the second part is we're not really doing, if we wanted to. I see this as really the preliminary step to hiring another firm if we think that's important or, or confirm, reconfirming that CSNA is the firm we should go forward with.
That is correct. This is only the, we're only at this point asking for the qualifications. They would, before you all awarded work, there would be an actual proposal from the firm that you choose to, for you all to consider awarding that work. So it is definitely a two-part process.
Yeah, so, so as a result of this, we're not going to get a report. We're going to get their perspectives of how they would do the work, what it might show and, and basically them showing us that they have the expertise to do the analysis and the work that would follow from that.
Sean.
Yeah, we're, I agree, we're asking for a set of qualifications for firms to be able to do the scope of work that we have in here. But to Scott's point, at the, after we get those lists back, we could get five different firms, right? But we could select, if we wanted more than one opinion on that, we could select two firms out of that five or if there's only two, we could select two or, but it doesn't preclude us from giving more than just one offer of getting the ideas that we have or the scope of work performed that we have listed here.
That's correct. You know, I guess when we, we've never done it where we did a, did a request for either bids or proposals or qualifications and then we made two awards, but we certainly could, if you all saw the benefit. I mean, they would be doing almost the identical work. They would be doing the identical work. So you'd be paying, you know, twice the price and you'd have two very similar documents. I would assume they'd be somewhat similar, but you, you would have two different opinions about all the alternatives identified.
And that's where I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You could use that, yeah, and, you know, it, I will also tell you that, that each of those two firms has expressed a willingness to work together with the other. I mean, when we talked to Chris Creed, he, he's very interested to know what Stephen Trainum said, and same thing with Steven. I mean, there's a certain amount of.
That's great.
Working together, I think.
Yeah, can almost tear up a soft solution, hard solution, engineering firms, but to be determined. So you're not looking for a vote tonight, just directional agreement that this is what we're, our next step.
Yeah, if, if you all are comfortable with the process, we would get these. So Mayor, I think if an option that's been identified is forego the process and just give direction to one or two firms to give us a proposal. So that would short, I mean, that would shorten the process a bit, but as we have it laid out now, we would issue these tomorrow. We would then get, to Jan's point, kind of resumes back for you all to consider at your next, at your next meeting.
We've got three firms now that are familiar with our beach. I know one of them only did the south end, but maybe toss it out to all three and see what, see what they come back with.
Or just, I mean, what the time, when, when, when are these supposed to be returned by?
So be a quick turnaround.
For the queue, yeah.
I, I don't know, you really don't have a meeting.
Well, we've done a.
Got the ninth.
Like the ninth is typically supposed to just be slated, but we have had other options on, we have had other discussions.
I mean, we already have a second reading of one ordinance tonight if it passes.
So if you wanted to conduct kind of regular business at the ninth, we would have these back for you to make that.
I mean, I think they would be, I think it'd be nice to get this information from us.
Whoever we can.
As many people as we can, I mean, we're only talking a couple. a couple weeks. I mean, I.
One last addition, Douglas, we talked about maybe adding the breach inlet piece of it and that, and that number one.
Yep.
Because I think all of the three, all the three opinions came back and had identified that breach was a significant contributor to the erosion, so we might want to add that in there.
Okay.
Other?
One more, I mean, just to confirm, what we will get from this is the qualifications of the firms that are applying and probably information about other similar projects that they have done. We don't expect them to, to, to give any recommendations as part of their work, okay? Just from this process.
Douglas, you go?
Yep.
Next item is discussion and consideration of lobbyist directive for 2026. We had them with us in our last meeting. Staff and I took a stab at just capturing what we had talked about and giving them directives, so this is just a definite draft, so if there are comments or changes or reprioritization.
Well, they, they mentioned that there's still an active effort to the home rule issue on STRs.
Yep.
Is that something that we would want to add to continue lobbying?
To keep home rule for that specific, for everything, but, yeah.
So that's a?
That's a 2026 because there's a bill coming, yeah.
Long-term issue.
Well, no, it's a 2026 because there's, there's a bill coming, Douglas, for short-term rentals.
I know the municipal association is active in that as well, but we should add on.
Jimmy.
Well, I've been satisfied with the lobbyist effort. I think it's been a good return on investment for us, but I was a little discouraged when they came and I asked him about getting approval at the State House level about the 30% money and the, the direct marketing organization. And I don't know if y'all heard, what I heard, but what I got from him was that, he said, well, you know, you probably need to talk to the Charleston CBB and see if they would mind lowering that, is what I got from that. And, you know, they're not going to, they're not going to lower it. I would hope that lobbyists would pressure the representatives in the State House to just change the formula and come back and say, okay, this is what you have and this is what we can use for infrastructure and salaries and wages and operating expenses. You following me?
I didn't hear that, but that's why we had the ATAX worried the way we have it on here. Either a reduction of the 30% or more flexibility in using it.
Well, Douglas, impression I got from his answer, but.
Other questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve with the modification to add short-term rentals?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve this list with the addition.
Second. I second it.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Boards and commissions report, Board of Zoning Appeals minutes are attached. Planning Commission met earlier this month. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, they meet, met today. Environmental Advisory Committee meets tomorrow. Ordinance's resolutions and petitions, second reading none, first reading title only is ordinance 2025-12 to update the class schedule for business license as required by Act 176 of 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve a title only, title only.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next is for a holiday street fest, a resolution 2025-12. Is there a motion to?
Motion to approve.
And waive the reading?
And waive the reading.
Second.
Douglas, anything or?
No, we do, we do this every.
Every year. One of the best events. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. The only miscellaneous business we have, so to the earlier conversation, December 9th will be our only meeting in December. I know we have at least this second reading for this ordinance we just talked about, and we'll see where we are with the other stuff if we want to add anything to it.
Yeah, sounds like we'll have qualifications.
Possible. Be no further business.
Let's do adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Off record at 6:34.
You can talk.